Alright, so I suppose the first item on the agenda today was the renaming of the ambassador program and possibly the renaming of the ambassador town hall. So let me give you a little bit of context of where this all of a sudden is coming from. So in the marketing guild, we are preparing to come up with a better messaging to promote the ambassadors program. And I've done a little bit of research, I've had a lot of conversations with the spin offs, with community members, and I've also monitored some comments in the discord. And there was this common theme that popped up that people are confused around what the ambassador program is. And what it means to be an ambassador and also how to become an ambassador. So there was this constant confusion. So in, I was thinking about my own experience when I arrived here at the ambassadors program. And I thought, well, wait, at the beginning, when I came here, I was also very much taken back in participating in the meetings because I thought ambassador program means I have to be an ambassador in order to fully contribute. And I thought ambassador town hall means in order to join the town hall, I have to be an ambassador. So there was always this confusion and it really held me back from contributing. And then I was thinking, well, maybe other people feel the same way. So I started to ask some questions and it turns out other people are feeling that way. And let me read you some of the comments that we got. It was, "You can't contribute to the ambassador program until you're a certified ambassador." "Ambassador Town Hall is not an event that's open to the community, but for certified ambassadors only." "The word ambassador implies exclusivity, therefore it isn't capturing that this is a community program that's open to all." "The word ambassador creates a them versus us feeling." "People are unaware that they are welcome to contribute to the program on a small scale." And they think that ambassador automatically implies that there's a huge commitment, a huge time commitment needed. "The ambassador program is a start to finish training program with a certain duration you need to commit to." And then there was a lot of comments that implied general confusion about the word ambassador and what it takes to become an ambassador. So now we were thinking, do we need to go back to the drawing board and rename the program and the town halls? Is it because, are we not growing or is there so much confusion because the name is confusing? Or should we simply do a much better job at explaining the ambassadors program and what an ambassador is? So now we would like to hear from you what you think. Does it make sense to rebrand, have a more self-explanatory name? Or should we simply just explain it better to people? And I will leave the floor open to you. And I will also share some of the alternative name suggestions we already got for the ambassador town hall and the ambassadors program. But yes, I would love to hear from your experience, what you experienced coming into the program. Was there any confusion? Or were you pretty clear of what an ambassador is and what this program does? And do you have any thoughts on renaming, any pros and cons around it? I'm aware that this was a lot of questions at once. Vanessa said when onboarding work group did a survey at the end of last year, we got some similar thoughts from people. Yeah, so we had some comments that a more appropriate name would contain the word community, like something like community contribution program or community governance program or community DAO. So. And Peter is entering again. So yeah, before we go a bit more aggressive on the marketing, we obviously need to be clear on if we want to keep the name or not. But I don't want to make the decision by myself, so please. Welcome back, Peter.
I can, I can give a little bit of insight, having zero experience with you guys. But a ton of experience in creating and community building. The closer your name is to explain what it is you are and what you do, the better off you are, right? The less explaining you have to do, the better off you are. So with that being said, whatever the purpose of this is, is what you should communicate. So if this is a community sounding board, in other words, it's for everybody who's involved in the community, who would like to have a voice or at least like to be included in these type of things, then obviously a community town hall would be a completely appropriate name.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, that, you know, just as an outsider who actually does have an interest in your ambassador program, I assumed that this was an exclusive gathering, just based on the title. And that's just coming from an outsider's perspective.
Yeah, and this is pretty much the, I guess, the main feedback that we got. It appears as if it's an exclusive program or it's an exclusive meeting, the town hall here for, for the ambassadors. Yeah, Vanessa, go for it.
Yeah, choose for that, Jerry. The thing is though, I think what we're looking at is changing the name of the whole program, not the name of this meeting.
Actually, false.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. I think obviously it's really good if your name reflects what you do. But I think one of the issues is that maybe what we do has changed. Maybe when it was set up, it was seen as some kind of traditional ambassador program. You get a lot of those, obviously, in Web three spaces. But the more we've gone on, the more I see that what we do in this space, not, not this meeting, in the ambassador, what's called the ambassador program, is we experiment with decentralized governing. We do little experiments every single day, all of us. You know, whether it's something like in your work group, you go, oh, let's not have the same person documenting every day. Let's share that. Or whether it's a massive thing where we try and create a governance token and try and vote on something. There's loads of those experiments going on and we're doing it in practice. Whereas, you know, other parts of the ecosystem are maybe theorizing and thinking about and ideating about how we could do it, we're going, let's give it a try. So it feels like it's quite experimental. It feels like we are testing things out in an actual group. So we're not like an ambassador program at all, in my view. And it's always like stuck in my throat that it's called the ambassadors because we're not doing what ambassadors usually do. What they normally do is they go out and go, oh, this is this organization and we're going to write something about it or tweet about it. And, you know, it's almost like for a lot of them, it's like a pyramid scheme. They exist to get more people to come in, to tell people that it exists, to get more people to, you get me? We're actually doing something and we should shout about that.
Nice, yeah, totally agree. I think, I mean, a small part of our work is ambassadors work where we actually put out videos in blog posts around Singularity Net. But yeah, it is just a part of it. And the name ambassador program doesn't reflect the other part of it, which is very important.
We have fully agreed with that. I have to say, and Vanessa, you also commented this on Discord, right? To a similar, similar message. But it did make me think like on, on the governance and potentially including that. I, I kind of feel like that's also not our main, like our, our core business. Like it feels to me like it's something that's, well, there's need for it when you're trying to kind of figure out contributions or community work in the broader sense. That, that brings governance with it. But I, I would say like if we call it like the community governance, something, then it would also not really cover fully what we're doing.
See, I think it kind of is the core of what we're doing. Almost everything touches on it, whether it's about money, whether it's about treasury, whether it's about how we run our meetings. And we're doing it through doing things that people are interested in. So, you know, whether that is archiving or making videos or making infographics or education, it all, in practice, it comes down to governance. I'm kind of just realizing that now. And I don't know if, if anybody else can see it or agree with it. But Peter, I was wondering, in that case, what would you say is our core business? What we do in?
Yeah, that's, that's something that also popped in earlier today. Like maybe starting at the naming side of things is not the, like in a way that would feel kind of like the, the final step to a whole process of figuring out purpose, value, mission, vision, you know? In my mind, like, and, and, yeah, that's just, in a way, a safe staple kind of thing. It's amplifying and spreading the words on Singularity Net's mission. Yeah, that's, and then we do lots of stuff like, like, in a, in a way, you're completely right where governance does play a role when a blog post gets written because there's a feedback process, there's some voting happening, there's topics that get decided, so that there's all a bunch of governance, but. In my mind, it's about community contributions in a wider sense. I see some hands.
I think Tommy, you were next.
Many, 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 many years ago, I worked for United States Ambassador to England, Jacques Whitney. He had a thousand acre estate on, in my town and I got to grow tulips for him. That's about as much as I know about ambassadorship, other than they only came out to that house twice a year. He lived in Manhattan or he lived in England. But the one thing I know from him is even though he was the public face as an ambassador, he had a complete cadre of an ambassador program supporting his public face. It was called, he was the ambassador. But they had people at the embassy, they had people doing this and that. And that's kind of along the lines of what we've developed here. We, we now, for the first time with BGI, will have outward traveling ambassadors. Though I believe Canicee and Rojo have done things at their universities. And I've gone to FAU, to the AI Safety Conference. But I could not have done that without.
That was the wrong button. I do feel this situation because, yeah, he'll be back, I guess.
Curtis, I think you are next. Did we fully lose Tommy or is he just muted? We fully lost him? Alright, Curtis, do you want to go next?
Sure. And I support what Jerry was saying earlier about the name should represent, in my opinion, a function of its purpose. And if the agreement is that the ambassadors program, its purpose is to develop government and governance, then, then I guess that, that, that would make sense. But if its purpose is something beyond that and governance is only just a factor in it and a common factor, which granted is true, then maybe it deserves a broader name. And for me personally, what I feel that this program is intending to do is community building so that it can establish communities for the AGI community, the Rejuve and Hypercycle and so on and so forth. So if this is the test bed for that community building, that would be kind of, my vote would be, if it had to pick a name or, or something, it would be around community building itself.
Yeah, good point. There's also an interesting thing we might want to consider is what we think this program is supposed to do and supposed to do. And what Singularity Net thinks this program is supposed to be and supposed to do. I think there's also a little bit of a, a little bit of a difference. But who else had their hand up? I think it was Guillermo? Was it?
No, it was Oku.
Oh, cool, okay, yeah, go for it.
Alright, greetings everyone. So I actually dropped a suggestion on the, on the group concerning the name and the ambassadors program. They have been opportune to be part of most of the ambassadors program. And I can tell for sure that what we have here in Singularity Net is quite unique, quite different from what we have from all the ambassadors program. So personally, from the time I've been here, most of the things we've done is really centered on community. From the different work groups, from the different groups being created and all the tasks being done, it's really channeled on community building and expansion. So I feel if anything be the case, in terms of the direction, I don't know where exactly the direction is going for the aim of the ambassadors program or the program in general. But I feel what we've been doing so far is more community centered and anything that follows that should be in line with community. So that's what I feel should be attached to that. For the name, I think community, something or whatever can be done, can be made in the changes of the name. So that's what I feel though.
Thank you. Guillermo, go for it.
Yeah, so, hi, everyone. So straight to the point, I participated on the first chat between Judith and Peter about this subject. And if we go back in time, a year ago, so we were a smaller community. And the ambassador program, personally, I felt the same experience like everybody mentioned before, but it caught my attention and it is engagement driven. So it's, it's a one step forward from being part of a community. So a community, as Tommy was mentioning, what is an ambassador? It represents a community. So, so I see two different bodies with two different objectives. What we have and what I have received from the ambassadors, where the key holders for the information, who to reach for, for give me the right north on how to get involved in different tasks and so forth and so forth. So they have a specific, let's say, job, like an ambassador, like a, like a country ambassador. They have, they represent a community. So again, I see this like two different bodies. I don't see rebranding the ambassador will help because then we will have diluted the, the task force of the ambassadors. So I think we can, now that we are a wider community, you know, that we have a community, maybe we, this is the right timing for, for putting a name, a community have, whatever you want to do it. You know, it's like, it's like a restaurant and the ambassadors will be the ones bringing the food, the ones representing the chef. Or something like that. But, but I see a specific objective on the ambassadors. And it's a place where you get, if you're, if you want to engage, you want to be part of a building, helping what, what, a lot of here persons are doing in terms of different circles, different adding value, getting engaged with different tasks and all of this. And the community is a wider space where people they probably there's people that don't want to participate in, in decision making or of the things. It's a, it's a wider space where you can inform, where, where you can get updates, where you can get all these different things that are, yeah, it's, it's a different, it's a different role, it's just being part of something. I see ambassadors, people compromised with, with helping building something. So it requires what, what we were discussing in, in, in the governance. For example, such an amount of hours or such an amount of tasks that you help build in the community and all of this. So yeah, I see two different bodies. And for me, there's not a, you know, a discussion on it. It's, if you, if you put them together, you, you have one thing will lose their strength. And, and yeah, we just find a purpose and we just figured out how to organize a lot of things during the guilds and all of that. So I feel that the job you guys are doing is amazing and I'll keep it, yeah. Arms and legs.
Thank you, Guillermo. Tommy, you're back. I want to give you the chance to finish your point, but then I would love to give Grace her time and, well, her spot here.
Yeah, I, I think my point was pretty much finished. I didn't hear the other thing. Today seems to be the day of laptop problems. I forgot to plug mine in, it died. I just was trying to get across that an ambassador program is a community. And just like a, a beehive or an ant community, everybody has different functions and everybody cooperates to do and get and educate and provide a message to the public. An ambassador might be the face, education or strategy or onboarding or archival, maybe behind the scenes. Governance may be the, the structure or the brains that are driving the things. But it's all one community. And, and everybody has their function, but it is an ambassador program. And, and whatever, if that makes it exclusive, then Singularity Net has an exclusive ambassador program. I, I don't think it does. I think it's a time accepted term, usually between nations for keeping peace and educating and providing trade, et cetera. So that's how I see the ambassador program, just my take.
Alright, thank you. And just to get a, a check from the room, if you can type in the chat right now with the information you have right now, would you be in favor of renaming either the ambassadors program or town hall? Yes or no? You can just simply put in chat, would rename ambassadors town hall or would rename the program? Would rename both or would like to keep the name? Just really quickly, like a yes or no? And then Grace, are you with us?
Here I am. Oh, that's not me. That's a, that's a black person. Oh dear, what's going on here?
Yeah, we cannot see you currently.
That's, that's no good. Here I am, here I am, I'm here, here I am.
Okay, great. So since the, the topic of the renaming, we will not be able to come to agreement today. We will leave it at that for now. Thank you, everybody, for pointing.
And even the topic of the, it's perfect. We're going to talk about governance, right?
Yeah.
So even for the topic of the renaming, right? Discussion is the first part of, of making a decision. It's like, okay, we've identified something, maybe we've created a problem space and we're discussing it. And renaming or not renaming, you know, isn't it easy to give a binary choice? Rather than, oh, maybe it should be different sections or maybe whatever it is, right? So yeah, and, and making it open, right? There's discord discussion and then there's the discussion here. I want to talk about the purpose of what you're doing and you guys touched on it. And I want to be, I think I want to provide you what I would call a extreme position about this. Because I think this is an extreme position that can be very well argued for. And I think it's, it's useful to look at the most extreme position in order to kind of like orient yourself and like say, oh, that could be possible, right? And the extreme position on the ambassador program is that you guys aren't doing anything, right? That you, and as you guys were talking about what you're doing, you don't agree on what you're doing. There were a couple of things postulated. One was getting the word out about Singularity Net. But at the number, oh, sorry, something's going on with my connectivity here. But if you look at the, I have to, I just have to move my computer, there's something jiggling, sorry. But if you look at the number, can you hear me again? Just thumbs up? Okay, so if you look at the number of the people engaging with the content that you guys have online, it's not very high. So are you really getting the word out or are you putting, just creating content, right? And if you think about, okay, governance, right? Governance is really good, running governance experiments is really good. But what are you governing, right? If you aren't, that's what our trouble is with the blueprint. It's like, well, how do I decide what a good governance experiment is if I don't know what I'm governing? Because governing a budget is really different than governing a house, than governing a baby. Baby, I've had a couple of those and I had to govern, co-govern them with somebody. And you know, like that was a pain in the ass. And we had to make, I, I married somebody, actually, that went really smoothly. Like we still, you know, so depending on what you're governing, you might be like, I don't want to decentralize the parenting process. That was good, two was good number for me. But I was willing to share it a little bit with some grandmas and stuff like that, right? So that's decentralization of the parenting process. And there are places like the kibbutz movement where, you know, they really decentralized the parenting process and they had children's homes and, you know, the parents took turns and whatever. You know, you could completely decentralize that decision-making process. And so it's a very different structure. And, you know, if you decide to decentralize the fire department's decision-making, that probably a bad idea because you need to make really fast decisions about emergency situations. So it's really important to know what you're governing. And so just saying we're running governance experiments would be useful inside a world where you decide we're going to govern a thing. Like we're going to try and govern some of the projects from deep funding because we think that AGI needs decentralized governance. And so we're going to create some open source projects or we're going to attach ourselves to open source projects and govern them. But that doesn't seem to be what you guys are doing. So you're governing like, you're sort of self-governing what you're calling a community. Now, community is people who can count on each other for certain things and they support each other. And I think that's what you're doing. And basically what that means is we've got a small amount of money and we're going to try and take care of each other. You're governing work groups, like, but what are you working on? Like we're governing work groups that aren't really very accountable to any ultimate goal. And we created work groups based on what we like to do because we're a community and we want to make sure everybody gets paid for their work. And so what we're doing actually is we're governing a community with a pot of money and trying to make sure everybody gets a little bit of the pot. That's what I would say is the extreme position about what you guys are doing is taking a small pot of money that has been granted to you by an organization, making sure everybody does something that looks productive and fits with their skill set and gives them a little kind of, a little bit of that money or big bit of that money. I don't know how much the money is, I haven't looked into it, but I'm sure it's completely transparent. It's just my ignorance. And basically that's what you're doing. And you're taking care of each other's needs. I would say that you guys have created a really wonderful culture where you're very expressive and where people can express different opinions and there's, there's no. And there's, there's no negative consequences for disagreement, these are profound things. So when Guillermo says we have something special here, I agree. However, I don't, the extreme position, right, like on my, on my grumpy days, I would say these guys aren't up to anything that is actually going to contribute to benevolent AGI. And I would say if I were in the, on my grumpy days, I would say to myself, one day the foundation is going to cut them off. Because they haven't figured a way to contribute and they haven't figured any independent source of income. And so that's a radical position, but I want to start from there. Because the case is that we are in a rapidly changing environment in the AGI world. We've got something called OpenAI that is in no way open and is no way governed by the people and is getting garbageier and garbageier as the days go on. And we have destructive AI everywhere we look that is destroying our societies and our planet and our young people. And we're sitting around here like, oh, I wonder what we should do. And I don't wonder, there's a lot to do. And so how can we make this community productive is to me a critical question for society, not just for the AGIX token. So I'm seeing Vanessa saying, yeah. And, and, and I think what Vanessa says is extremely valuable. It's like, look, you gotta start somewhere. And we're at least at a point where I can ask this question and there's a group of people to ask it to. If I had asked this question a year ago, it's just, you know, who would be discussing it? And so I'm not saying, wow, you should have figured this out years ago. I'm saying it's great that you've now got a supervisory council that's going to ask you nasty hard questions and make you think about this. And we have a few months together to come together on at least, let's say for the next couple of years, what we'd like to do. Like what would be the things that would be in service of beneficial AGI and Singularity Net? And one of the things that I found is really wonderful about Singularity Net itself and you know, Ben's leadership is that they really give a lot of leeway to organizations like yourself to say what's important. And I really believe that the Singularity Net and the people who have the multi-cigs will be happy to continue to fund a productive, happy, useful group. And I think there's many, many business models that can be pursued. And so having said that, is that a good background for what we're going to talk about? Even though I know it may be slightly uncomfortable.
I think it's a good background, really biting my tongue to not fight back on the extreme position, but.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about the extreme position isn't that it's correct, it's that, it, it's that, it's, it's that it's a way to look at it, like it's, it's, it gives you like, it's like saying, what's the worst possible scenario when you're programming, right? Like if that were really our situation, what would I want us to do? It's better than starting from, from something, right? You could start from nothing and it's like, well, we could be anything we want. So that's another way of expressing that extreme position. Great, Judith has her hands up.
I feel like the very most important value that we deliver in this program is that we're figuring out how to build a structure, how to build a program that allows people to contribute and that allows people to get paid. The world is moving towards decentralization, there's going to be organizations across the entire world that need to figure out how to engage their workforce and their community in such a way that we're building here. So we're figuring out how to build a workplace that's decentralized. And I feel like there's so much value in it. We now have figured out how to engage random people basically immediately and have them getting paid without the need of them applying with a resume, without them going through some interview process. Like we have figured out how to just bring people in and engage them and pay them and have that run smoothly, they're getting paid on time, they know what they're getting paid for. Like I feel like there's so much value in this program itself that organizations one day are going to come to us and be like, please tell us how do we build this? Like we want this for our community, we want to engage our community in such a way and we want to pay them. What treasury system do we need? What process do we need? And I feel like what we built is insanely valuable.
I want to ask you a question, why is that better than UBI?
What is UBI?
Just giving everybody universal basic income. Why is that better to have people do work that they like, right? They can do whatever they like, you said their contribution, right? Make a nice video or whatever. What, why is associating that money with an action better? Yeah, but I understand Walter that they go away for a month. But I'm saying if you didn't produce a video that somebody sees, right? If you produced a video that seven people saw, which is, that is, that is the number of people who've seen some of the videos here. And you spent time doing it and you got paid for it, but only seven people saw the videos. Why is that really better than not having produced the video and getting money for it? I know this is an extreme question, but I want to be really straight about it, right?
We just released the, the report, like our Q4 report of the views we got in the video workgroup. And we are at forty thousand views for quarter four. It's not amazing, but it's also not nothing. And as far as I know, that the writers' workgroup, they also get several hundred views in a quarter. So yeah, we're at the very start, so our numbers are not amazing, but I mean, we're, we're building and as the.
I understand, I'm just saying that like, to me, I'm not sure it's better to pay people, like I'm just not sure, right? Video views, those are meeting videos, okay, meeting videos that have, okay, not the ones created by the workgroup. Okay, cool. So I get that. So some of the numbers, right? But some of the, some of, but you get my point, right?
I, I do, but.
Even just get, you know, like you get my point. The point is, why is it better to measure contribution than to just make sure everybody gets money? And, and I'm not sure it is.
But apart from, apart from the views, don't you think the, the figuring out a system that anyone can now put in place if they wish to engage and reward their community? And maybe their community does a lot better job of producing videos. But don't you think that the system itself that we built is something of value? That now others can use and implement in their organization to make them more decentralized?
I, I don't know, like I don't, is there code around it? Is that an easy thing to do? Like how hard would it be? Right? I don't know.
It was pretty difficult to figure out the structure, the treasury system, the governance around it. I wasn't much involved in the process of it, but I think it was quite some work.
The fact that it's work is very different than saying somebody else could implement it, do you know what I mean? Like let's say that you're right, this is a great system. What, then we have to be able to implement it. Anyway, I'm asking these questions not because, like, I'm asking them as a devil's advocate. They're important questions, right? When we think about the purpose of what we're doing and your perspective is really legitimate. I think that what we're creating is a governance system, that's what Judith is saying. A governance system of a treasury for people making contributions to an organization. That's what she thinks the ambassador program, and that's a really useful answer to what you think the purpose is. It's totally legitimate. And like I said, I'm being devil's advocate to get us to think, not because I really believe everything I'm saying.
Well, I'm a business owner and I would consider implementing this in my business or in one of my next businesses. But there's so many hands up.
But that's useful, yeah, there's a lot of hands up, but I think that's a really good purpose. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, gonna, gonna add that to our purposes. All right, go ahead.
I'm not sure who was next, but go ahead, whoever had the hands up.
Vanessa's next.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, talk about the difference from UBI. I mean, I love UBI, I support it with all my heart and I hope I live to see the day that it's implemented in the country I come from. But I think the difference between UBI and what we're doing is what other people have already said, it's community. If somebody gives you a, a basic income, you can still be sat in your house on your own. Whereas what this is doing is building a way that we can do whatever meaningful work we want to do together. And how we can look at how we work out, as I think Judith, you mentioned the governance issues around the whole treasury tooling. The questions we have to work out when we work together. It's, I guess, no different from a lot of the community enterprises that a lot of us have been involved in all our lives. You know, since I was fifteen, I've been working in cooperative ventures and collective working and political organizing and community organizing. And this isn't that different, but it's another way of doing it. And it's about building, I, I think what I notice about this ecosystem is it's an awful lot about tools. And then it's about questioning whether those tools should really rule us, looking at what effects they have on us as a community. And doing that, you know, that kind of experiment. I think when we've been talking about videos and so on, I would love it if some of that content, some of that video content and some of that writing content was more about the experiments we've been doing here and about what we've learned about working as a community. I'd also love the community itself to use more AI tooling and then write and make videos about that. And what, just kind of expressing what we've learned and telling people what our experiences have been and, yeah, I'm going on. But I think the tooling around treasury, we were talking about that. I don't know if someone else could have created it, but the fact is that we did. And we should be shouting about that.
Just to be clear, my question isn't whether somebody else created it, but whether somebody else could implement it as is. Because if that's the purpose, we would want to create a tool, right? That was my question.
I'm not following, you're asking whether someone could implement.
Yeah, like if I was like, wow, I love how you're doing it, could I take it and apply it now?
I mean, isn't that the point? And also, isn't it the point that they maybe wouldn't be able to implement it wholesale exactly as we do? Because the whole approach we take is quite decentralized. It's very much like, yeah, we can do it our way and you might need to do it your way. And we might need to tweak it, we might need to teach you the background of how we got here so that you can implement it the way you need to. So for me, this is, this is why I keep saying that governance is interweaved with everything we do. It's about, if we try to give that treasury system to somebody else, we'd have to say, how do you run yourselves? And then we'll know what adaptations you need to make, that kind of thing.
Cool. Just before I, like, this is great. So before I call on Rojo, I want to just show you what I've been doing and what we're doing now. So that, just to give a little context, okay? So we're brainstorming now about what it is that we're doing here, right? Before that, you were brainstorming out what to call ourselves and we started to brainstorm about what is the, what are we doing? The host should enable sharing at this point, so that I can share my screen. Let's see if that will happen magically, not happening.
Judith, that would be you, I lost host when stuff.
I am not the host. Somebody should regain, reclaim host somewhere. All right, I'm gonna call on Rojo, but I want to just say like, these are all really legitimate ideas. And in a second I will share with you, oh, now I'm a co-host, all right, great, I'm gonna share the screen. So what I'm doing right now in the framework that I'm going to introduce is, this is the framework of brainstorming. Explorer is where I'd like us to stay now. So that is, people can give ideas about what is the purpose of this. And that's why I wanted to start from nothing, like if I can, I know it's radical to say you're doing nothing, I know you're doing stuff. But if we say we could be doing anything, then any idea about what we're doing would be great. And this, if you've noticed, a lot of times people come up with ideas, there's like, there's an idea and then they go, let's do it. And that's warrior, which is the execution stage. In between, there's just explorer. The other thing people do is say, I've got a great, I've got an idea. And then people either say, wow, that sucks, or wow, that's great, that's the judge. And they, they skip, let's come up with a whole bunch of ideas. And then the artist is, let's play with the ideas, let's group them together, let's turn them upside down, let's mush them around. Let's, let's figure out what we could do with all of these ideas. And then the judge would say, okay, now that the explorer has come up with lots of ideas and the artist has played with them and colored them and grouped them and eliminated, you know, and, and made them better. Maybe put some little flakes around the outside. Then the judge says, okay, let's rank them, let's figure out which are the best ideas. Maybe let's vote for one of the ideas. It's not a yes, no question at that point, hopefully, if the explorer has done good work. And then at the end we execute. And this is really important for us, we're not actually doing an execution as a supervisory council, we're writing a blueprint. And that's why it's important for us to understand what is it we're governing? So that the experiments that we ask you to do when you're the warriors will be useful for governing what it is that you think you're governing, right? And so far, you know, there have been a few different things that have been proposed that it, that are what you're governing. So the other thing I've been doing is taking this sticky note board, which is right here and I will give you the link to it. This is a jam board on Google because I don't, I don't really like whiteboards. I mean, I like the physical ones where you really have sticky notes, but I'm starting with this one, okay? And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna share this one and anybody can add their ideas of what it is we're doing. But so far, what you guys have said, I've been adding as sticky notes, like we're getting the word out, we're creating tool category, we're creating community. I tried to use the words that you guys have used so far and I'll continue doing that. And like I said, any of you can continue doing that in real time or while we're talking or if we get a chance to have a break and just do that, we will. But knowing you guys, we'll probably be just chatting and so you can add your things simultaneously. So let me put that link in the chat here and then Rojo can.
Yeah, I think, I think depending on who you ask here, you will have like different answers about like what does the ambassador program do, what it should be focused on and stuff like that. And this just represents like how decentralized even like the way how we think about this thing is. To be honest, the way how I personally see it is, I don't see this, the ambassador program as the product. I see it as a tool. And I see Singularity Net itself as the product and that's what, that's why I'm doing this. I want, I would like to see Singularity Net as a mainstream thing. Ambassador program could be a product subsequently and others can take whatever framework we're designing here and whatever. But that, that shouldn't be the main focus in my, in my opinion. For example, if you look at video workgroup, which I started back in the day with, with a couple of members here. The way how we started was like, okay, there is a lack of videos explaining what Singularity Net is about. And we would like to create some stuff because we are ambassador program, so we'd like to promote Singularity Net. So started creating videos about that. And then the question came in, which is like, how do we track how well we're doing? Because obviously there is no framework, like we don't have someone telling us, oh, we're tracking these KPIs for you to see if you're doing a good job. We had to do this ourselves. And then we tracked things like what Judith mentioned, like a number of views, number of likes, number of comments and these kind of things. And then we, we even went to other platforms and all these kind of things. Writers' workgroup started exactly the same thing. Okay, we have some couple of white papers, but nobody reads these white papers, only the technical people do, very few of them. And people who would like to know about Singularity Net, well, they only have update blogs, which don't mention a lot of stuff about the solutions themselves. And then you get white papers, so not much, let's say, options. And then Writers' Workgroup comes in, starts writing amazing articles, one after the other, hundreds of people reading those. And, okay, it's not amazing, but it's, it's a good start in my opinion. And you have the same thing, for example, with the current, with a lot of things, you have archival. Um, and you have the same thing, for example, with the current, uh, with, with a lot of things, you have archival, for example. Archival came in, I was like, okay, there's a lot of IDs coming in here, but these IDs get lost, like, they're not recorded anywhere. So we need kind of like a certain framework to record these and perhaps even add AI to that. And like, get a whole different look into these, to what we're doing and like, start really recording information and maybe chat with that information and get some stuff out of it, and all these kind of things, like, uh, you have incubation, which rebranded now into research and development, and all, all of these, like, different, let's say, ways of doing things, but they all have kind of like a common thing, which is, they, they're, they're supposed to promote Singularity Net one way or another, or at least eventually promote to it. For example, if we're talking about research and development, we're, we're trying to build products, but eventually those products are meant to be hosted on the platform for Singularity Net. And that's kind of, uh, that's kind of how we look at it. And, uh, just one last thing, Singularity Net won't go anywhere if there isn't a product. I mean, we can ideate all we want, but if there isn't a killer product that people are actually using, uh, yeah, nobody would care. We will keep doing our things and, uh, lab to whatever work we're doing here, but eventually, nobody cares.
Great, thank you. And I also wanna broaden this a little bit beyond just the ambassador program, but really the community, because I do think that the ambassador program serves as a community. And one of the things I've observed is that when there's a hole, you guys fill it in. Great. Like, you used to host the deep funding town halls until they took that over themselves. You've, um, you're looking at how to assess the deep funding proposals, because Yana's trying to figure out how to do that. And so I've noticed that you are the community that is supporting things that all of a sudden show up as needs in the ecosystem. And so, again, I'm not criticizing it, I'm just saying, that's not well articulated. But as a community, I would expand it, what are the potential things that you could do as a community? And again, please add your own ideas, I have a whole bunch of ideas, but I don't wanna add them before, um, like hearing from more of you. Go ahead, Guillermo.
Guillermo? Sorry, um, I missed a queue. So, yeah, I think, uh, Rojo just mentioned a, a lot of things I have here. I don't know, uh, and you already know all of, uh, some of them, Grace, we have been discussing this. Uh, I like the idea of shaking the table, uh, and, uh, its framework for creative process. I do, it's something that you do in labs and in research and development environments. Uh, and critics who just don't know how to take on criticism, um, you know, should go and have a, a walk on the park, that's what we're doing here, so no problem on that at all. I think, uh, it's, uh, it's very constructive. Um, so whatever stands on the table, stays on the table, it will be even stronger. Um, as you know, we, we already discussed assessing deep funding, that is one of the main products, uh, from Singularity Net, is, is the, is the door that will open new ideas, new community members, uh, new products. Uh, still, uh, we don't have to miss the spinoffs, uh, and all, or all the ecosystem of Singularity that, that there are great products. Uh, I think, um, personally, at the end, if you see the figures, uh, the measures of all this, the actions that you put up, video, all this is without spending a dime on, on marketing to, to sponsor this. Uh, so I think when, when, when we get, uh, step on that with a clear message, things will come eventually. But at, at the end, you need a great product to, to advertise. Uh, UBI. Oh, I, I mean, I live in Argentina, I, I spent, uh, ten years in California, uh, I came back here, uh, I left a country before, I was working. UBI came to destroy everything around. There's, uh, I think it's something that you can apply on a, in a framework that is working, and it can be applied to integrate, uh, people, uh, with an objective, but, uh, spreading around, uh, uh, utility without purpose is useless, it doesn't work. Uh, uh, I see the importance of a liaison between the, uh, supervisory council and the community. The ambassadors, to understand better, I, one of the things that I, I mentioned a couple of times before meetings, that one of the things that we missed last year, uh, was one of the community, one of the ambassadors, being part of the supervisory council, because they know the kitchen. So we should have, uh, avoid a lot of time. Uh, this is not against the, the members that have been supported and selected, but still, it's a, you, you, you will have only information ready to go. Uh, so, uh, now coming, coming down to reach all this data, uh, is valuable because that's something we got, we could have done in the beginning. Um, so, um, Writers Guild is another good example of what this, uh, ambassador brings to the table. So Mindplex, translations, uh, and all these documents that I've, that I've been spreading apart, and all this knowledge is going through different languages, and, and I think it's great. Uh, then, uh, we, we, I don't know if you were listening to a discussion we had before, with the branding, the name of the ambassador, Grace, because it was all the point of, so a community, you need a community to have representatives, okay? And so an ambassador is a, is a representative of the community. Now we have a community, and we can go wider, we do, uh, advertising. So I think we have a valuable structure, uh, with, uh, and as Judith mentioned, we have figured out how to interact and to get better archives, onboarding, all the things that Rojo mentioned. They are, they're sort of great working and, uh, you know, we process the information. Uh, so this is a good timing for you to come down, uh, and to reach all this, because we, we are in a, you know, when you put a turkey on the oven, we are just in about the right time to put the, to put the gravy and to, and to look up, because we are almost done, you know, to, to come, uh, and, and help a lot. Uh, I'm sorry, I spend a lot of time in a kitchen, I pay my studies with that, so I can use a lot of that. Uh, but again, there's a, uh, but there's only great talent and individuals here. Uh, there's still a lot of ideas to, you know, to keep, uh, flourishing, so, uh, um, yeah, that's what I say.
Yeah, great. I think Jerry is next. Sorry, Tommy is next, and then Jerry.
Um, thank you, Grace, I appreciate it. Um, appreciate you coming to listen to us, it's, it's nice to know uh, that someone wants to lend an ear. Um, I really love your, um, playing the devil's advocate to, you know, set some people on their ear and uh, stir the pot of controversy a little bit, it's, it's, it's fantastic. Um, Jerry, I gotta say, you might, uh, Hypercycle might have that one product, as Rojo said, uh, that sets the world on, on, on its ear, and I say, por vida, uh, to you down in, in Costa Rica about that. Um, I think we've identified, uh, Singularity Net as, as a business model, uh, is, is, in my opinion, terrible. Um, the, the ambassador program, you know, in, in this web three, you need a product, you need community, and you need a token a, among the very basics of things. Uh, Singularity Net has, I think, nineteen spinoffs, uh, that we've pretty much identified that we're doing vids and infographics on. I think there's, um, ten different tokens. There's no real intake of where income is, is going. Uh, but from a business model on the nineteen spinoffs, or at least, um, I'll say eight of them, they have their own ambassadors, their own marketing teams. Uh, and, and it's just duplication, a lot of duplicity and wasting money, uh, in, in my analysis. Um, it should be consolidated, uh, the ambassador program, which as you said, has filled in, uh, and, and I think we've done a pretty good job in just a little over a year with no directions, other than a small budget, and said, hey, go invent and build a ambassador, uh, program. And we've had Peter, fortunately, who has been fantastic, uh, as our steward. Um, as a product, um, many of, uh, deep funding, uh, many of the members in here also, uh, man the wheel at deep funding. Uh, they have been using the treasury system that we've developed. And, uh, actually, the cellular thing that created circles, uh, came, uh, out of the ambassador program and the different guilds and workshops, they were all set up to be individual cells, uh, with their own decision-making, uh, process. And, and we've stumbled, uh, we've made a lot of errors, we've experimented. Sometimes we get along, we do have, uh, and we've developed a conflict resolution document, uh, working on code of ethics, all in the view of a much bigger, um, responsibility for the ambassador program for building community. There's splintered Telegram, uh, communities, there's splintered Discord communities, et cetera, et cetera, but you already know all that. Um, and, and my take would be the business model is, is not as sharp as it could be. Um, as Rojo said, we need a, you, you know, ChatGPTs out there and, uh, Google, uh, whatever their, their newest name for Google is. Uh, Zark is supposed to be out, but not, and then there's learning curves and all these other things. Um, it needs a solid product, uh, to kick off an income stream. But, and, and here's where you play devil's advocate, you need an organization such as the ambassador program, whatever you call it, you need it to build, contain, harness. And, uh, because I'm a farmer, uh, you need to grow things, and, and community needs to be grown internally. Uh, it needs to have a trust basis and reputation basis, uh, which we're working on. And you need to know who, who you can work with and who are going to achieve things, not just get paid uh, to do things, but to achieve things. And, and that's what the ambassador program has been solid at. Uh, some of us have gotten away from just a, uh, you, you know, minimum wage here and, and.
I just wanna, so, I just wanna, I'm really aware of the time, and there are two other people, so could you, can you wrap so I can let everybody? I'm sorry, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but I see that, I really wanna hear everybody here.
Okay, well, as I said, I was about to say, Singularity Net's minimum wage is ten dollars an hour, uh, essentially. Some of us have gotten away from the per dollar, uh, model to a what did you accomplish model, and, and, and that's one of the experiments. So, um, again, Grace, thank you for your time. Jerry, thanks for joining us. Uh, you're the one infographic and, and video that education hasn't gotten yet, but we're working on you.
And by to assume that, because my hand is up and I'm next, I can go.
You're the next, yeah.
All right. So I, I, I feel it's important to say this as somebody who cares deeply about this ecosystem. Um, and being a complete outsider, so I have no antecedents, I know, have no history, I have no engagement other than the fact that I really enjoyed a one-on-one conversation I had with Peter when he showed me some of the things and how he does what he does. Okay, so with that being said, when I go look at what your stated purpose of your, of your ambassador program is, which is clearly stated on the very first paragraph of your welcome to the ambassador program, and I look at your video, which is a piece of visual content that has both text, you know, it, it's verbalizing and showing me what you expect or want from me as an, as a potential ambassador. It's really all about spreading the word, right? It really is. And so, one of the things I can tell you, having been in volunteer organizations almost all of my life, is that your actions should align with your stated purpose. And the moment they start to diverge, whether good or bad, there is no, it's not an assignment of good or bad, it's a matter of clarity, and it's a matter of being in integrity. So for instance, in the case of what I believe your ambassador program is, Singularity Net, the company, funds, funds this endeavor, right? And so therefore, if they're funding this endeavor to meet the purpose of what's stated on your written ambassador program, and in the context of what your, welcome to the ambassador program states, it really is literally guerrilla marketing. In essence, it's spreading the word, creating awareness. And so anytime you're creating awareness, there are metrics, right? Metrics involved. It's very easy to get analytics on how many people clicked your thing, or how many people read your deal, or how many people watched how many seconds of your video, these are all very measurable things, right? And so, not to assign a good or bad, there's just how effective, right? How effective. So if somebody made a piece of content that garnered, and, and I'm using statistics that I heard bantered around this room, that reached seven people, I wouldn't say you did something bad, I would say, how could we reach more people with this message? Evaluate that. If you can't, then stop sending a message out that only reaches seven people, and send a message out that reaches seven hundred. You know what I mean? And it's about getting better at what you do, not morphing what your stated purpose is to, to dictate what you want to do. I would ask everybody, and, and, and maybe if your purpose is different, then change it. Change what you state you're about, because your actions should align with your stated purpose. As human beings, when our actions get out of alignment with our stated purposes of life, we get out of integrity with our spirit and our soul, right?
Yeah.
If, you know what I mean? So it's like,
Yeah.
I would, I would direct everybody to go back to that, because I'm confused. I came as a, yes, I work for Hypercycle and all that stuff, blah, 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 but I came here as Jerry, also a very interested person in possibly being an ambassador, and I'm actually very confused by what I heard of what the role of an ambassador is, even though I went and read it. Very clear what it's, what it's written, and I'm very clear what the video says, but I'm not clear that it lines up with what I'm hearing this body say it is. And so, as an outsider, those are my observations, and I give them to you with love and, and much respect.
Yeah, thank you. And just, I, I propose, there's a comment in the chat about how this is mass media. No, I, I, I think that that's inappropriate and a little bit harsh. Um, you know, Jerry is going off what we, what is written on the website, he's not going off mass media, he's going off what is written on the website. And so I think that the snide comment about his.
Saying the metrics is click-throughs, that's, that's exactly where we get to, using these metrics, it's just some bots are gonna click it, okay?
Okay, well, that's, you know, that's, what metrics you follow is a different, you know, different question. I wanna point out something that, um, before I go to Peter, because, um, maybe he'll something to wrap it up. But I just wanna notice that none of you have stated any purpose. I, it might be just a joke, I just think we need to be careful in text about telling jokes, sometimes it comes off, like, to me, it came off very critical. Maybe I misinterpreted it. Um, so anyway, the, um, nobody talked about beneficial AGI, nobody talked about almost at all AGI, a few people talked about supporting SNET, nobody talked about the dangers of AGI, nobody talked about the ethics of AGI, nobody talked about the myriad of things that would make this community unique. I would say, right now, and this is the first session, I, we're gonna have three additional sessions, and Judith will announce when they are. But in this session, there's very little on that board that is unique to this community. And I would consider very deeply, uh, in our next session, that we're gonna continue the explorer mode and really look at what I mean by beneficial, and what would be some roles that this organization would have, that would project, give us a trajectory into the future of being a really important part of beneficial AGI, and not just another DAO that creates DAO tooling. So, uh, Peter, go ahead, please.
Um, well, first of all, fully agreed on that, um, that's a recurring issue, like.
That's a recurring issue, like, I, I do feel we are, even with Singularity Net itself, but there's so many people we're just not reaching. They're not into AI, not into crypto, not into tech. But they are humans, and, yeah, it will affect everybody. So, yeah, you're, you're right in calling to that. And also wanted to, well, in a, in a way, a bit of, in response to Jerry. Over the past two weeks, it's become quite apparent. And that's also why we started off this call with this whole naming discussion, that we're quite, well, doing something different than our name implies. And same for the tunnel meetings, which are not just for ambassadors. So, yeah, right now, you're bumping into us in the situation of kind of figuring out how to deal with that discrepancy. Just wanted to, yeah, point to that.
Yeah, and I really want to say that this is such an appropriate conversation. And reiterate what Vanessa said, it took us a while to get to the point where there's enough people sitting on their chairs and being in this room to even have this community discussion. And I really appreciate all of the hard work that goes into that. And these are appropriate growing pains for the level of maturity that this community is at. There's nothing wrong with like a baby that pees in its pants. Like, it's totally normal for a baby to pee in its pants. Now, if that happens to an adult, it's a problem. But you, as a young community, having these questions is normal. Normal for this phase of development. And I'm so honored to be able to be part of the supervisory council and help you walk through some of these exercises together to really establish this as a, you know, an important part of the technologies that are being developed and will affect everybody in the world. So I acknowledge everybody here for that.
Thanks a lot for that. Amen, I would almost say, that's, yeah, nice. And to be continued. I, I guess, looking at the clock, we're wrapping up, right? Pretty much.
Yeah, I suppose. I mean, this conversation could go on forever easily.
And so we've set, let's see, what do we set? Next Wednesday, I believe, that we're gonna have another evening, oh, evening for me, America's Friendly Session.
Yeah, next Wednesday, five UTC, 5:00 PM UTC, 5:00 to 6:30 PM UTC.
And then we'll be having an APAC in Europe friendly time after that. And we'll also be continuing this conversation in some of the deep funding town halls. And by the way, town hall is a very standard terminology for the main meetings in DAOs. And it's, a town hall has always been a public meeting. It's a very friendly term, actually. So I, I like that name. But, yeah, so we will be having at least two or three more conversations on the same topic, like, what are we doing here? It's an essential topic for everybody. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, well, I'm gonna give it over to Peter for last words, because usually he's the host, not me.
Yeah, that was a terrible, terrible start of this call from my side with my laptop breaking. Actually.
Forced decentralization of power.
I was, while it was breaking, I was trying in Zoom chat to send over a link to the slides, but turns out it's completely not needed. And in the meantime, or in the time it took for me to, well, not even being able to paste that link, I could have reset already. Anyway, well, so, yeah, thanks, Judith, for hosting today. And also thanks, Grace, for being on and facilitating this process. Yeah, it's still an ongoing process, that's, that's for sure. I think it's great. It feels like taking a much-needed step back, reflecting on what we're like, in a way, when this whole thing started, pretty much. We, we had, in Top of Mind 2019, we had a very first iteration of something resembling an ambassador program. I, when I started working, I, I found some stuff, some documents on the, on Google Drive. That's basically where it's, what I picked up. And the name just stuck without proper consideration. And yeah, I think it's, it's the same for the what Jerry called that, like, supporting the, or spreading the word about Singularity Net and its mission and vision. We didn't do proper yeah, mission and vision and values and goals sessions for, for this program. It, it kind of evolved in what it is now. And apparently, if you go that route, then at some point, you bump into, well, the current topics. So, yeah. Does feel like we're dealing with it, but at the same time, it's gonna be, as always, a bit slower than everybody wants it to be, which is also good to take proper time for. Yeah, that will be some closing thoughts from my side. And thanks, all of you, for being here and spending time with us. Let's just, yeah, that's where it all starts. So thanks a lot.